And we're live.
Come down.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Present.
Councilmember Farrelly. Councilmember Golumback.
Here.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Present.
Council President Prision.
Here.
Majority Leader Rivera.
Present.
President Pro temp Scanlon.
Present.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Here.
Congresswoman President.
Thank you. Let's stand for pledge. Thank you. Our chaplain, the Reverend Dr. Al Warner.
Thank you, Council President. I know that the loss of any life is tragic, but my heart has just gone out to the family of Sanaya Dennis and the tragic loss of her life. You know that it wasn't just a local news story, but actually made national headlines as well for an incredibly grieving family. Certainly, you know, friends and associates. I appreciated that each station that ran it ran with it. Telephone numbers for those who are struggling with suicidal tendencies to be able to report. And I know that the workload for those agencies has just been monumentally exponentially increased in this past year. I know families that have been affected, losing kids during this time. And it's overwhelming when we bury the next generation. Council President and at True Bethel, you've had way too much experience at that and way too many whose lives have been snuffed out far too young. And I think our whole city grieves and my heart has been troubled. I've talked and prayed with others about families that are experiencing such great loss. And I would like to lead us within all of our council districts for the families who have lost. And now for those that are have an ongoing struggle that life went out in the midst of all the craziness that we've all experienced so often in our city in the last year. Would you bow with me in prayer? Lord, I pray even now, recognizing that this one that was lost is only an example of so many that are under huge amounts of stress and and they're being stretched, families that have lost loved ones, especially the next generation of our young ones. For the families Sanaya Dennis and all those like her that have struggled and some that have lost and families that are in ongoing grief for that tragedy. Lord, we lift them up to you today, and I pray you, God of all comfort, the only one that can comfort into the deep hurt and pain and recesses of parents' lives, families' lives, friends' lives in the loss. Lord, right now I lift them up to you. And Lord, in addition, we lift up every young person that is struggling right now with hopelessness and fear and are overwhelmed by the pain around them and the pain inside them. We ask Father that you'd come into them. Lord, help the wise voices, the righteous voices around them to be able to resonate and let life triumph over death, let life win over death. Lord, I pray, recognizing that at any age, somebody who loses their life, and we've lost far too many in this last year, is a great tragedy. So we lift those families to you as well. And Lord, as Ezekiel, who looked over a valley of dry, disconnected bones, we pray even now, Lord, he prophesied life. And Lord, we prophesy life. Thank you for the next generation and for the powerful anointing they carry. Lord, anything today that the council is doing that influences and affects and impacts the next generation. I pray for extra wisdom for them today. And thank you, Father, even now that we can call out your life on the next generation of those in Buffalo in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Warner. It's so appropriate. Councilmembers, memorials. Councilmember Golumback.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Black Rock community lost Diane C. Urbansky, that was grandmother of my friend Jay Marie. She's going to be very, very sorely missed by her family, her friends, and the extended Black Rock community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others? Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. The Lovejoy District, we lost Edward Cannon. He was a member of our Bailey Brinkman Block Club, and he was always there faithfully fighting for his community. And, you know, he'll be sorely missed. And I just also wanted to take a moment to thank everybody, my colleagues, the mayor, deputy mayor, constituents, block club leaders, all for, you know, coming and reaching out to me in my father's passing. It meant a great deal to me. And, you know, having the community behind me is such an honor and a great pleasure. So thank you to everyone who has reached out. It's been so many people. It's hard to keep track. But, you know, my family and I found comfort in that in this difficult time. So thank you all.
Thank you. And again, sorry for your loss. Anyone else? Councilmember Noah Kowski.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I would like to put in the name of Patty Jones, who was an advocate for equality and especially for LGBTQ youth. She was a resident of Amherst, but was really a regional asset to us. And, you know, she was somebody that really was that that person that people could count on. And I just want to put her name in memoriam. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Scanlon. President Pro temp.
Thank you, Council President. I'd like to ask that the council keep in its thoughts and prayers the family of Mr. John Martin, who passed away suddenly a week or so ago. He's a long, long time resident of South Buffalo. He and his family are engaged and involved in a lot of things throughout the community. And he's going to be sorely missed by his three daughters, his wife, and numerous grandchildren and friends.
Thank you. Anyone else? President? Councilmember Wingo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to ask that we keep in our thoughts and prayers Mother Carrie Lee Porter, who went on to glory last week. She was a long-term member of the Antioch Baptist Church as well as a member of the Maston District. She lived over on Florida. She was a community leader. One thing about her is that folks would say they always knew she was on the porch, so they wouldn't even look. When they rode past her house, they would just wave. So we're going to miss her waving back, but she'll be waving back in spirit. So we want to keep the family of Carrie Old Porter in our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Saying none other, we always remember people who have given their life for the freedom of our country and for the freedom of others as we pause in this chamber for a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Today, we have a special presentation from President Pro temp Scanlon.
Thank you very much, Council President. You know, once in a while, I begin to think that the City of Good Neighbors moniker is sometimes thrown around a little too often when describing the city of Buffalo or its residents. But then you hear a story that reminds you exactly why that is the case. It's because it's true. We have with us today Buffalo Police Officers Andrea Anderson and Ashanti McLean, two officers who operate out of the C District, who have been residents for seven and eight residents, who have been officers for seven and eight years respectively. And based on what I've heard from some of their colleagues in C District, this story is indicative of a day in the life of these two incredible people. Recently, when visiting with a neighbor in their district, officers McLean and Anderson learned that the resident had fallen on some really hard times. She was dealing with the death of recently, the sudden death of a loved one. She was personally dealing with a very serious illness. And she was struggling to keep up with her bills as a result of the pandemic. And when they approached her to see how she was doing, they find, found out even more. In addition to the personal issues that she was dealing with, they discovered that she also no longer had a working stove or hot water tank in her home. And this is when they sprung into action and embodied the City of the Good Neighbors moniker. Officer Anderson purchased the stove and the hot water tank. And Officer McLean installed them in the woman's home. This is why we are called the City of Good Neighbors, quite frankly, because we have people like this, officers like this, who go above and beyond the call of duty. They go above and beyond to help neighbors. And in the words of this resident, who they assisted, probably saved her life. So I think it's not only appropriate, but it's important that during National Police Week, we recognize these two tremendous Buffaloanians, these two tremendous officers. We have a proclamation that'll be going around to all the council members for their signature for the officers. But I would just like to read the very bottom of it for them. Now, therefore, as we look to highlight stories of those who work tirelessly, making immeasurable sacrifices to faithfully serve our communities, we do not need to look any further than Ashanti McLean and Andrea Anderson. It is a great honor and privilege to recognize Buffalo Police Officers McLean and Anderson for their efforts in delivering acts of kindness, compassion, and generosity to the citizens of the city of Buffalo. We applaud and thank you because we know that because of your sacrifices, the people in our city are stronger, safer, and more resilient. So again, I just wanted to thank these two incredible officers for everything they're doing on a day in and day out basis. But in addition to that, going above and beyond to helping a resident, helping a neighbor who is in need.
Thank you. And either of you would like to say anything? You have the floor. Start with Officer Anderson. No?
I was trying to unmute myself. Let's see. Ms. Donna is a really nice lady, very appreciative, super humble. I had no idea that she was the star she was from that story. But I just knew I couldn't live without a stove. I couldn't live without a hot water tank. And sometimes if we could just put ourselves in someone else's shoes, we can, it's easy to jump into action. It meant nothing to me to go ahead and purchase that stove because if I couldn't find a stove, I was just going to give her the one out of my house I could take out. But her monthly income, I don't even know how she survives. And so I was humbled that she allowed us to help her. Because sometimes people, their pride won't let people help them. But she was super humble and she's ever appreciative. I just talked to her two days ago. I do constantly check in with her. She keeps thanking us to this day. And it's like our chief said, we always do it. We never know when the next help is going to, where the need is going to come from. I mean, you know, the common need that's out there, but you never know when you're going to be called on to just, just at the spur of the moment. You know, it's like the Lord tells you, this child needs help, and I'm calling you to go help them. So with that being said, that's, it was true. This is what we do, you know. But that's it. Thank you for having me, and thank you for that proclamation. It's beautiful and sweet. And next time I do an event for the community and I send you all invites, I expect to see you all.
Is the installer available? Does he want to? If we get you off of mute, and then there we go.
Yeah, so when Officer Anderson brought this project to my attention and explained to me what happened with Ms. Donna, I was definitely willing and all in as usual. It was a great privilege and honor to put it in for Ms. Donna. She was greatly appreciative. And, you know, we do things like this, not for recognition, just because this is the people we are. And, you know, there's less fortunate people out there that need more things than, you know, we do. And if we can help them, we try. And this is a prime example. So like my partner said, thank you for the acknowledgement. Thank you for the proclamation. We appreciate it. And we're probably going to have more stories in the future to continue what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Wingo.
Oh, thank you, Council President. Can I just say this? I know I jumped on a little bit late. But I did catch what Councilmember Scanlon was saying earlier about these two officers. And just for the record, I didn't know who he was talking about. And I'm thinking to myself, well, this is just so nice. This is so nice. Who are these people? And then when Officer Anderson popped on the screen, I said, oh, that doesn't surprise me at all because they are some of the nicest officers that I have ever met. And not to anyone, any on, no other, any other officer's detriment. But I am not surprised when I hear about, you know, how these two officers have interacted and interfaced with the community. But with all that said, you know, I wish we can have more officers, not that there aren't, but if we could just acknowledge more officers in this way, the way they do this work. Thank you, Mr. President.
You, Councilmember Scanlon, last one.
No, I just, one of the other things I wanted to mention was how incredible it is that, and we talk about this, we, within the council, these two officers, they operate out of C District, but they don't just work out of there. They live there. They live in this community. So it's something that they want to take care of. They want to continue to improve as we improve the entire city of Buffalo. So I think it means even more to the people of that area that they live in that community as well.
Amen.
Yeah, and I did know that their chief is on. I didn't know if he wanted to say anything as well.
See, you have brief remarks? I guess not.
I got.
Oh, he went to the other camera. I thought he ran out of the room.
You know what happened? I got kicked off the video. Pastor, I'm so proud of these guys. I am. And this is what I preach at the district. And these two, this is what they do. They do this often. I think they're a little pissed off that I got them out here giving them a spotlight, but I don't care. I love these guys. I love, this is, this is what they're all about. And just like a lot of other officers, they do this on their own free will. They come out of their pocket, and they don't even ask for anything or any recognition. And we appreciate you guys so much. We're honored. We really do. Thank you so much, Pastor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Scanlon.
Sorry, Council President, just one last thing. It's easy to see, if you know Chief Bright, why officers in that district operate the way they do and go above and beyond the way they do with leadership like that. He's really truly an incredible leader within the department. And regardless of whether it's the police department or any other industry, we have more people like that, we're going to be better off in general.
I totally agree with you, and I have watched him go up the ranks. And he always remains the same in whatever pressure he is under. So it's a great team. Councilmember Noakowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. These officers and the chief are two, are going to be two bachelor, but I'll say it for them. This is just what they do. This is just one instance that we're highlighting. This is stuff that they do all the time, and I can't be happier to see the recognition that they're getting. And I have all their cell phone numbers. So if anything happens in the Fillmore District, I can personally call these folks. And they go in and they get it done every day. And I just want to commend them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. On behalf of the council, thank you, and thank you, President Pro temp, for acknowledging them and allowing us to speak. All righty, thank you. I know you all need to go out and buy more refrigerators and stuff, so we won't but you are very much appreciated, as many of your colleagues and those who do a good job for our community are. Thank you. All righty. On a motion by Mr. Gray, second by Mr. Scanlon, the minutes of stated meeting held on April 27, 2021. Our crew, councilmembers, you have the late file before you. Are there any objections to any of the late files before you? There are no objections. We will hear the entire agenda that is before us, not taking away your right to pause the meeting if you need to review an item that may have just arrived. Majority Leader, are we going from the top?
From the top, thank you.
All righty, from the top.
Item number one, 107 Alabama Designated Developer Agreement.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt. Item number two, disposition of real property, 30 Bud Mill Drive.
Mr. Majority Leader, we do have to take an item out of order and discharge item out of resolutions 52.
And Mr. Chair, motion to take item 52 out of order.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 52, discharge item 21-478 from Lodge.
Motion to adopt.
Second by Councilmember Fairlawn.
Item number two, disposition of real property, 30 Bud Mill Drive.
Motion to send to CD items two, three, and four. Second by Councilmember Fairlawn.
Item number five, reported sale 480 Dodge.
Motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt. Item number six, reported sale 87 French.
This item is open.
This in the Maston District is Councilmember Wingo still connected? Send this to committee then, so we know what he wants to do.
Motion to send to committee.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Item number seven, reported sale 14 and 18 Coons.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski. Do we know what item number eight is before we, so we don't have to come back?
We might have to send that one to committee if the council member's not on.
All righty, let's have the roll call.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item number eight, reported sale 535 Northland.
Send to committee.
To committee, second by Council President Pro temp Scanlon.
Item number nine, reported sale 344 Paderewski.
Motion to approve items nine through 12.
Second by Councilmember Fairlawn.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item 13, appoint seasonal laborer two.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 14, follow-up record storage facility lease audit.
Motion to send to finance.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 15, change order BFD interior improvements.
Motion to approve items 15 through 20.
Second by Councilmember Golumback. Can we do 21 also?
21 as well.
Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Mr. President. Councilmember Wyatt.
Mr. President, I just was asking, because I know we just passed finance, and we talked earlier in caucus about the auditors, the controllers' letter for the budget, and just wanted to know if Chief of Staff got any response or anything?
Mr. President, we have not received anything yet from the Controller's office. We anticipate filing them towards a special session when you vote on the budget.
Do we have anything from the control board?
No, we have received nothing from the control board.
Okay, then let's do this. I'm sorry, I'm getting a little feedback. Let's do this the opposite way. Instead of waiting, I think we need to reach out because on some of the past budgets, we haven't received it. And to receive it on the day that we are making a decision, I think it's too late. Their opinion is important. And to wait until that day and hope that we get it, especially from, from the control board, it has to come to us. They are mandated to send us a report. That report should be being filed much before we come to the meeting to vote on this budget. It's a part of the consideration. So let's send them a notice today by email, followed up by a formal letter to request their response.
Mr. President, I've just gotten a message from the Deputy Controller to say that the Controller's report will be in within a half hour.
That's how we do it. And let's do, then, we don't have to send the controller report. And I thought that the controller said that they were going to have theirs filed on time, so I'm glad to hear that. But we definitely need to hear from the control board. All right. Was there anything else, Councilmember Wyatt?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next slide.
Item 22, appoint battalion chief.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Fairlawn.
Item 23, Tyson Joseph 1500.
Motion to approve.
Second by President Pro temp Scanlon.
Item 20.
Let me, I want to recuse myself from that item because I know that individual police moved to recuse by the majority leader. Thank you. It's second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 24, dance hall 719. I'm sorry, we threw the roll call for number 23. Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Recused.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wingo. Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item 24, dance hall 719 Bailey Ave is withdrawn.
Motion to withdraw.
Second by Councilmember Fairlawn.
Item 25, dance hall 1669, AKA 1673 Hurdle.
Motion to send for legislation, items 25 through 28.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 29, mobile food truck, Tommaso's Catering.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Item 30, tire handler 668 William.
That one was an approval. It's a do a roll call. And it appears that Councilmember Wingo may be having some connectivity issues because of seeing, so you don't have to call him in the roll until he comes back.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski.
Yes.
Council President Prision.
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera.
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt.
Yes.
Item 30, tire handler 668 William.
This item is in Maston. Can we go back to that one? Or is, is the council member still trying to get on?
I have no, I don't see him buffering in, so just send everything at this point that is not marked for Maston, we'd send it to committee.
Motion is 31 and 32 to committee.
Mr. Majority Leader, I have a note from.
Excuse me. Second by Councilmember Wyatt. What do you have, Chief of Staff?
A note from Mr. Wingo on the current items. 21-629 to be approved with conditions.
We'll come back. I'm not going to now go back. We'll go back at the end like we normally do. Next item.
Item 33, used car dealer 668 William.
Motion to send for legislation.
Second by Councilmember Noakowski.
Item 34, appoint building inspector.
Motion to send to civil service.
Second by Councilmember Bowman.
Item 35, approval of extension to the BER National Parking on Contract.
Motion to approve. Second by Councilmember Golumback.
Councilmember Bowman.
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly.
Yes.
Councilmember Golumback.
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item thirty-six, items returned to city clerk by mayor without approval or disapproval.
Motion to receive and file item thirty-six through forty-nine. Through forty? Forty, I'm sorry.
Hmm, not a problem. Second by council member Gullumbet.
Item forty-one, responses to defund the police form memo.
This item is open.
Um, that could go to the committee of the whole if you want to, because that's just was the responses for the budget.
Motion sent to the committee of the whole. Second by council member Bowman.
Item forty-two, medallion letter in opposition to impound lot at one Babcock.
Motion sent to CD.
Uh, second by council member Fearle.
Item forty-three, special use permit two forty-four Allen.
Motion sent to legislation, city planning board, items forty-three through forty-nine. Second by council member Fearle.
Civil service, item number one, appoint press information officer.
Majority leader, if you can call those, it's council member Wingo is now-
And to receive and file items one through four. Second by council member Wyatt.
Finance. Item number five, contract extension, university emergency medical services.
Motion to approve. Second by majority leader Rivera.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number six, single source provider request parking on.
Motion, right, this item is open, it's, uh, sent without recommendation.
Um, Mr. Chief of Staff, we're supposed to get information from, I believe, the commissioner regarding this item?
I don't have any updates on the item, sir.
Okay, um, we can recommit it?
Motion to recommit?
Yes. The motion is to recommit, second by council member Rivera.
Community development, item number seven, report of sale two forty-nine Newberg.
Uh, this is Lovejoy District. Mr. Bowman, did you have a recommendation?
Yes, can we mark that for approval, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Okay, motion is to approve. Second by council member Bowman.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item number eight, NFTA bus stop concerns at sixty-one Lakeview.
Motion to receive and file.
Second by council member Wyatt.
Legislation, item number nine, Board of Ed- resolution on school safe zones.
Motion to receive and file items nine through twelve.
Second by council member Bowman.
Item thirteen, zoning map amendment for Marilla Hopkins Buffalo Railroad South Tiff Nugdak.
I believe this is in South District, council member Scanlon on items thirteen and fourteen. Please recommit. Motion is to recommit items thirteen and fourteen.
Second by president Proto Scanlon.
Item fifteen, special use permit twenty-three eighty-one Fillmore.
Motion is to approve items fifteen, sixteen without rack, is that approved?
Niagara District.
Uh, yes, you can approve it.
Okay, oh, motion approve fifteen, sixteen, council over Scanlon seventeen. Six thirty-seven Tiff for storage. Approved, please, sorry. Okay, motion approve fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
Eighteen.
Eight and eighteen.
Yes.
Second by council member Noah Kous.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item nineteen, twenty-twenty food store license renewals.
Motion is to receive and file.
In my council member Wyatt.
Item twenty, special use permit one forty-four Cottage Street.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Member Noakowski has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an approved with conditions that I sent to the clerk, but I will read into the record. Um, per, you know, corporation council's request, but the first one is owner instituted quiet hours. Second is guests are required to take care of trash recycling. The third is number of guests limited to five bedroom count. Number four is guests or owners must keep sidewalks and utility fire hydrants clear during winter time. Number five is one-year annual review sunset clause. If permit does not need to be reviewed, it shall be and renewed annually. Uh, in the last, but not least, number six is if there is a significant event or call log, two-three-one-one-nine-one-one or Fillmore District Council Office, this special use permit shall be allowed to be revisited or revoked. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Alright. That's the motion. With conditions.
And my council member Noakowski.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Claims, item twenty-one, Bruno Elio five thousand.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve items twenty-one and including fifty-seven.
Second by council member Bowman.
Mr. Chairman, fifty-seven has an updated marking.
The, that was already approved, actually. It was earlier, so it's just double, so, still approved.
Seven would be a receive and file.
Okay, do you want me to make a motion to receive and file item number fifty-seven?
So you can just go to fifty-six, and then we'll come back to fifty-seven.
Okay, motion is to approve items twenty-one and including fifty-six.
Uh, second stance.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item fifty-seven, Tyson Joseph thirty-eight hundred.
Motion is to receive and file.
My council member Bowman.
Resolutions, item fifty, set public hearing for disposition of real property Bureau thirty Bud Mill Drive.
Motion to that. In my council member Bowman.
Item fifty-one, ordinance amendment, article twenty budgeting.
This is a late file.
The motion is to, uh, motion to adopt remainder, would you like to send it to finance? It would probably be a good thing, second by council member Wyatt.
Item fifty-two, discharge item twenty-one.
Wyatt has the floor. Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to, um, thank my colleagues for their efforts on this piece. Um, council member Bowman, um, did a yeoman's job on putting together, working with our corporation council, he and, um, council member Noakowski really put a lot of effort in. Myself and council member, um, Rivera kind of worked with and met with the mayor on these pieces, so, um, I hope that is, uh, we came to an agreement and understanding, and I hope that, um, by, by the committee that we can approve it. Um, I think it was probably one of the first times that we really kind of worked closely together, so, uh, I'm hopeful that this will work, because this is what all of the regulators have said that we needed to do, um, to get us, put us back on solid footing as far as our finances. Um, we gotta start somewhere. We know that we don't have a lot of money in the bank, but, um, we do know how, we have some opportunities, so again, thank my colleagues for their efforts on this, um, good piece of legislation. Right, right. And I'd like to thank you all for, uh, leading this effort, and I do understand that the meeting with the administration, uh, particularly with the mayor, uh, went well, uh, in bringing this forward. And, uh, so it does look out for future generations, not just ours. Uh, ensuring that we, we leave, uh, better than when it came. Anyone else? Alright, council member Bowman?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to, uh, thank all my colleagues as well, and just explain a little bit, this is a, um, newer item of the fund balance, because of substituting, um, the item had changed between the conversations between the council and the administration, but I want to thank everybody for participating. Um, the only question I have for law is this, uh, should we, we, uh, send this item directly instead of adopting? I just want to clarify and make sure we make the right, uh, move on this one. Is, uh, is Karen here?
Yes, I'm here. You want to know if you should send it to legislation?
Yeah, directly, or?
Yeah.
Should we be adopting it?
I think we should send it to ledge unless there's something else that, that I know of, I don't think there's anything else out there, so, yeah. We've made some substantial changes from the last one, you know, up until this morning, so I think it should go through the, the normal route, but, you know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion is then to send to ledge?
I think, Mr. Chair, if it could be recognized, I think we should send it to finance, because I think last time we sent it to ledge, and we moved to finance, I think it should be moved to the finance committee. If there's any objection from the finance chair.
Well, we usually send these legislations to ledge, you know, because it's legislative in nature. It's amending the, the charter, um, so, yes, it does deal with, you know, the financial fiscal, uh, you know, bloodline of the city, but it's, you know, still legislation, so.
Yeah, I think we should, we, we, we have to follow that normal route, um, that way, uh, people don't get confused of where we'll send an item. So the motion is send the ledge, did I already give you a second? Second by council member Bowman.
Item fifty-three, local law to amend article thirty-one flood damage prevention.
This item is open, it's a late file.
Motion is to send to legislation.
Motion is sent to legislation. Second by council member Noakowski.
Item fifty-four, common council request for judicial decision on Buffalo Charter article three dash nineteen.
Motion to adopt the resolves, remainder to legislation. Second by council member Wyatt.
Item fifty-five.
I'm sorry, council member Wyatt has the floor. Can you please add me to this? I think, I think it's very important, so. These are council member Wyatt to this resolution. Alright. Next item.
Fifty-five, home row message.
This item is a late file, item is open.
These are, both of the next two will, uh, be adoption. This one is to continue, uh, the pilot program of the parking permit, uh, for residents in the Fruit Belt, um, and the other, um, for seller bonds and notes.
Motion for that, items fifty-five and fifty-six.
Second by council member Bowman.
Item fifty-seven, recommended police policy reforms and community engagement.
Motion to adopt the resolves and the remainder to legislation, both items fifty-seven and fifty-eight.
Uh, second by council member Noakowski. On item fifty-eight, the in-room, um, I just wanted to make clear what, what I'm asking for. Uh, normally, our auction is in October. Bring it up, is in October, based on, uh, what we normally do. However, I just feel like in a pandemic, uh, when so many people have suffered financially, uh, to have the auction in October may be devastating to a lot of homeowners. Um, a home is probably one of the biggest investments the average American will make. Um, when we see that there are so many landlords who were not receiving rent, um, whose some of their tenants would not go and get the assistance. They could not evict them because of the moratoriums on evictions, and I know that it takes years, uh, for a house to come up for auction. However, and I'm looking into this now, and I know this council has adjusted several things about the auction, for two hundred dollars, uh, worth of back bills over an extended period of time, someone could lose their home. Uh, someone could lose their land, and I just feel we need more time, and what we have been told is if we have the auction later, that they still, we still would be okay with our budget in moving this auction, uh, later. I, I just think that moving it now or doing it now would be insensitive, uh, to the pandemic that we are, and the economic hardship that many people are suffering. And for those who are not suffering from it, sometimes we forget, and sometimes people forget that there are those who depend on those rent payments, uh, in order to make their payments. You say, well, hey, they had two years, or they had three years. Yeah, but maybe they could have caught up this year, and there are many of them, and I've talked to landlords, who could not catch up because they had tenants there, and some of them, uh, unfortunately, it wasn't because they couldn't pay. It was just some of them, they refused to go and get the assistance, because they knew that they could just leave when this, when the moratorium is over, and that it would be very difficult, and shame on those, uh, on those tenants who could have gotten assistance, wouldn't go get it, and didn't pay their landlord. Um, and so that is what this resolution is asking for. Come, uh, council member Scanlon, then council member Wyatt.
Thank you, council president. I, I just want to thank you for leading the charge on this. I think it, obviously, we all know how incredibly important an asset is, uh, someone's home, someone's land is. So the last thing we want to do is be taking it from them, um, when we don't have to be. We want to get them headed down the right path, get them on steady ground, owning their home, and again, it's probably for most people, their, their largest asset. Uh, one thing that I did bring up in budget earlier in the week, and you actually touched on it as well. The one thing I just wanted to ensure is that we pick a date where the returns from the proceeds from the sale do come in and do not impact the current budget year, so that's the only thing I ask, moving forward, we just pick a date that we have enough time before we reconcile the end of this upcoming budget year, that those proceeds come back. But thank you again for leading the charge on that.
Thank you, and, uh, I totally agree with the president Proto that, the, I'm sorry, that the date is very, very important, uh, so that, uh, we, we are able to meet our budget. Council member Wyatt? Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your efforts on this. Um, again, I think we, I learned a lesson from the schools on cameras, is that we have to look at how do we legislate. Um, Buffalo is one of the third poorest cities in America, and we continue to do things that in some cases may not be beneficial for people who are struggling, so this is a piece of legislation I think is smart. Um, I think it takes into consideration the struggles of folks, and I think in the future, we need to continue to do that, so I commend you on this, and would like to also be added as a sponsor. Thank you. Yes, sir, I do, and I, I don't want to take all the credit for this, I can't. It was community-led, uh, and folks like PPG and others who came and said that, and once they said it, it, it was apparent that this should, uh, occur, so, we, we, um, again, listening to our community partners and, and making wise decisions, so thank you all. Ready? Next item.
Item fifty-nine, research for feasibility of introducing electric vehicles to city fleets.
Motion to adopt the results, remainder to CD. Second by council member Bowman.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, I can't see you on my screen. Yes, sir, uh, council member Noakowski.
Thanks, I just wanted to just highlight that the energy policies of the council, um, had, are adopted a few weeks ago. Also will give us, um, that information in the policy, so I think it'll be extremely promising to have that data to be able to move forward with, but this is a great resolution. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Absolutely, and it's good. I mean, we're all on the same page on this electric vehicle. Uh, councilman Bowman, Gullumbet, uh, myself, working on this end of it. Um, but it's so important, because we got to start building the infrastructure, can't wait until the last minute. Um, and, um, it's a way to save our planet, and really, cost-wise, um, it really, uh, comes out at times better because of all of the lack of maintenance that you have, don't, that you, that you, you don't have to do anymore, the maintenance that you don't have to do anymore. So this is important, so thank you. Next item.
Item sixty, waiver of fees for Eid at the park.
Motion to approve. Second by council member Noakowski.
Council member Bowman?
Yes.
Council member Farrelotto?
Yes.
Council member Galamback?
Yes.
Council member Noakowski?
Yeah.
Council president Pridgen?
Yes.
Council member Rivera?
Yes.
Council member Scanlon?
Yes.
Council member Wyatt?
Yes.
Item sixty-one, commissioner of deeds.
Motion to adopt item sixty-one and sixty-two.
Second by Councilmember Glumbeck.
Item sixty-three salary ordinance strategic planning.
Motion to approve.
Second by Councilmember Wyatt.
Councilmember Bowman?
Yes.
Councilmember Farrelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Glumback?
Yes.
Councilmember Noakowski?
Yes.
Council President Pritchard?
Yes.
Councilmember Rivera?
Yes.
Councilmember Scanlon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyatt?
Yes.
Item sixty-four ordinance amendment chapter four seventy-nine speed regulations.
Motion to send to legislation.
Second by Councilmember Farrelly.
Item sixty-five request mayor to fund traffic coming measures citywide.
Motion to adapt. Second by Councilmember Wyatt. We have some items to be revisited from Councilmember, we go, send the chief of staff a note.
Yes, sir, uh, we have, if we could revisit items number three and thirty-one.
Motion to revisit items three and thirty-one.
Revisit item number three. All right. Motion number. Item number three.
Item number three should be sent to ledge for a public hearing.
Motion to the uh, to change a previous motion. And now the motion is to send to legislation.
Oh, second by Councilmember Wyatt. And what was the other numbers?
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one. This item is to be approved with conditions.
Motion now is to approve with conditions.
Second by Councilmember Bowman. Any other items in front of us?
Council President?
Councilmember Scanlon.
Can we revisit item number fifty-seven?
Motion to revisit item fifty-seven.
Second by Councilmember Scanlon, the item is in front of us.
Thank you, Council President, um, I think this resolution has some very good components to it, um, I'm not categorically against it. I think we always need to be improving whether that's the Buffalo Police Department or any other department within the city of Buffalo. And I think the Attorney General has some very valid points in her communication to the city. Um, however, I do have some questions about some of the components of the resolution, we, you know, we're currently dealing with an incredibly. Alarming spike in crime in the city of Buffalo, shootings and murders are skyrocketed, scar, cars are being stolen almost non-stop, in fact, I. Recently just saw a story about uh, a man who was dragged down the street by his car last night on Elmwood as it was being stolen from him. There's legislation that has been passed at all levels of government, in my opinion, that are impacting the ability for officers to adequately and. Effectively perform their jobs, I am, I have some questions about some of the operational components of the resolution, for example. I think it's very difficult to tell a police officer. That they absolutely have to give a verbal warning prior to using certain levels of force, not knowing what the circumstances are they are involved in. I have questions about a civilian review board, how it would operate, who would be put on it, the, so, how would they would be put on it? The associated costs when it's clear that we need all the funding we can get our hands on to combat crime currently. Um, in addition to that, we currently have the Commission on Citizens Rights, our Police Oversight Committee, our Police Advisory Board. The District Attorney's Office, the Attorney General's Office, the US Attorney, all who review issues regarding uh, police issues. Um, so I am curious, again, I have questions about why we would need another one. And we also, we continue to have a conversation about. Improved policing and civilian review, so in other words, how to address police issues after the fact. I think what we need to be doing is putting much, a larger, a much larger emphasis. And many more resources into things on the front end, such as the hiring process. We need to be researching and investing in who's conducting the written exam, the psychological exam. And all other components of hiring to ensure that we have the appropriate stat, people staffing the department. So for these reasons and some others, I'd like to be recorded in the negative on that resolution, please.
Um, please record council, uh, President Pro Tem Scanlon negative.
And Mister President.
Councilmember Glumbeck. Um, just so that um, those who may be watching understand what this resolution that I filed is, is really. Uh, verbatim of what the Attorney General recommended. And also it is only a recommendation. Uh, at the end of the day, when the uh. The Attorney General of the State of New York says these are things that. I think that should be included, especially when it's the Attorney General's Office who ends up getting involved. Uh, in some of these cases, um, of, of police, especially police officer, uh, is involved in a shooting of an unarmed citizen. Um, I think it's important to send those recommendations uh, to the committee. That has already been put together so that they can vet them out, they can talk about it. Um, I think that not to put forward, and, and I want to be clear, I didn't receive. A copy of the Attorney General's letter to request it. And once we did receive it, I think that it is very important when we're talking about uh, hearing from everyone. Uh, hearing from the public, hearing from our law enforcement community, hearing from the legal community. To at least uh, advance these recommendations. So this resolution in no way codifies or puts it in stone, it simply is a set of recommendations. That was sent from the State Attorney General's Office. You know, I think that for, for me, uh, what I want to keep in mind is the lives of those who have been lost. Um, I want to keep in mind the year of protests that we heard, um, which I feel were justifiable protests. And I want to keep in mind that the reason um, that this is, is filed is so that their will versus one of the things that the Attorney General talks about. Is public meetings uh, with the public, and I've said this earlier. We can either invite the public uh, to, and, and hear them or whoever the committee is. Um, or else the public will push themselves through uh, to be heard. And so I, uh, we record a Councilman Scanlon, Councilman Glumbeck in the negative, Councilmember Farrelly, you have the floor.
Thank you, I just wanted to add, I, this resolution encompasses a lot of different topics and potential policies. Um, I'm voting, I will be voting in favor of it, but just wanted to mention that some of the things that were suggested as, as. Some of my colleagues say the devil is in the details, so ultimately, the resolution's asking the administration to draft items. Or policies which we would eventually vote on, so I don't, I, I will vote in favor of something that's asking for something to be drafted. But as you said, this isn't, we're not voting on any laws or policy, we're asking it to be researched, so that's why I'm voting in favor of it, but obviously, would like to see what comes out, thank you.
Absolutely, Councilmember Veer?
Thank you very much, uh, Mister Chair, and I agree with Mister Farrelly. I think that we have to explore um, many of the things that are up there. Uh, the Attorney General mentioned a number of things and some of them, I'm not certain are. Um, that she's even certain about because there's some pending litigation with regards to the Citizens Review Board. Um, as a result of the contracts, these contracts uh, show that uh, the discipline part of it is negotiated between the administration. And the um. The Police Department Union, and certainly there's some legal issues here that we have to get by. The second thing I'd like to know is what model are we referring to, it's. I mean, there's just so many models out there when it comes to uh, review boards, and I don't know which one we're referring to. Uh, so with regards to legal questions and which model um, we're referring to, I think we need to explore those things. I'm going to vote in the favor, but certainly I want to look at those details before. Um, I can feel comfortable in supporting uh, something, um, that's what the, uh, even. The Attorney General is recommending because what applies in New York City may not apply here in the city of Buffalo. So I want to look at the model, I, I'll be paying close attention to the details, I'm not against it. I just want to know what the details are because uh, there's some laws, state laws, there's some. Legal opinions that are still out there impending with regards to some of the things that she's even saying we should do. Uh, which I find it kind of strange because there is a case pending in Rochester, what regards, it's in the Appeals Division. Uh, so even some of the things that she said we can do are still in court, thank you, Mister Chair.
Absolutely, Councilmember Wyatt?
President, now thank you for putting this forward, and I appreciate my colleagues openness to this because I think that, you know, I think that we looked at the uh. The fund balance policy and Councilmember Farrelly made some great recommendations, and I think that. Once we get a document together, there's some other things that we can tweak and make it where we're comfortable. Um, because there's no one size fits all, but we know that this is an opportunity to do something good. And I'm not to say again, this is not against police, it's just how do we reform in a way that the public is asked for? It's got to be a balanced way, we can't go to one extreme versus another, um, but I think this is a good first step, I know, um, I talked to our. Assistant Corporation Counsel, and she's working on um, the Civilian Review Board, and she's gotten a lot of information from other areas, so. Hopefully in a couple of weeks we'll have that document in front of us, and we can look at it and, and refine it and make it where it's ours, knowing that. Some of the things are still in legislation, and I think that once we hear from the federal government as far as their reforms. And with this, the governor, we'll be right and locked up with what they're trying to propose, I mean, no one's trying to do anything draconian. Um, but I think we've heard loud and clear from the public, and I think it's our responsibility to respond. In a responsible way and hearing from them and putting something in place that makes sense. Um, Buffalo is the second largest city in the state of New York, and we don't have a review board. Every other city, Albany, Rochester, Syracuse, New York City has one. There's still some components that we have to wait on the judicial system to tweak, um, but I think it's a good first step, and I, I agree with my colleagues. Let's get something where you can see the details and make certain that it's something that you could live with, thank you.
You, and we've already voted on this, so just for the record, um. Uh, Councilmember Glumbeck and Councilmember Scanlon want to be recorded in negative, I don't believe we have to have a total uh, vote all over again. Uh, we'll mark that for the record. All righty, uh, clerk, any, I mean, announcements?
Announcement of committee meetings, the filing meetings are scheduled to be streamed live on www.facebook.com forward slash B F L O C C. Committee on Civil Service Tuesday, May eighteenth at nine forty-five AM. Committee on Finance filing civil service at ten AM. Committee on Legislation Tuesday, May eighteenth at eleven, at one PM. Committee on Community Development Tuesday, May eighteenth at two PM. Special Committees, Committee on Education Tuesday, May eighteenth at eleven o'clock AM. And public comments for the mayor's recommended budget can be submitted until Friday, May fourteenth. By email to councilstaff@buffalony.gov or by phone seven one six eight five one five one zero five.
All right, council members, any announcements? Hearing no announcements, majority leader.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second by President Pro Tem Scanlon, we are adjourned.